All right, good evening, everyone. Sorry for the slight delay. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate at this time. And Mr. Rick, will you please lead us in our prayer and our prayer conceit, sir?
Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this day and the blessing we're receiving from it. Lord, we thank for the rain you have sent and pray that you will send more and more blessings. As we go about the business of the founder, help us to have the wisdom to do what would be good for all the citizens of this town. Lord, just forgive us when we fail you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that the sort of? All right, and so approval of the minutes of the February 26th meeting, 2018. Everybody have a chance to review those?
Only I noticed was on the second page, we were just given a very last decision was made the motion by Paul M. Davis, the second by Paul M. Davis, because he's a lot of more than that.
He had to take. Good catch. All right, motion to accept the minutes as presented with corrections?
No more questions.
Have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye. Great, thank you. All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on the agenda at this time. Is anybody present not on the agenda? As I say, this is the part everybody jumps up, nobody talks. I see. All right. City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on a resolution optimizing the Chamber of Commerce to have an ethnic festival parade on April 28th, 2018. Any comments? Yes?
And today, 28th, we are going to run the same route we did last year because Lone Star Market will be at the Wool Warehouse this end weekend. So we'll start on line up on 10th and go to Jiffy Road, go to Hutchins, come down Broadway, and then back to Wool Road in town.
So basically, nurse?
Yes, nurse. We're rewinding.
Okay. PD knows, and it also state, you want to do that with the state?
Um, I think we're just gonna do the whole state thing.
Do what?
Do we do the state?
The, I'll be glad I can get through it now.
Yeah. She gets it when they go to the state. All right. Good deal. Do I have a motion to accept the Chamber of Commerce having the ethnic festival parade on April 28th? Do you have a second?
Right.
All in favor, say aye. All right. Second, you hear. All right, City Council may consider and discuss or take action on the request for the Chamber of Commerce to close the 100 block of North 7th Street for a car show during the ethnic festival. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Specify north.
Yes, I got north.
And we are going to incorporate a car show this year. There was a small one held over here last year. This one's gonna be quite a bit bigger, and so we were, we were hoping to block off a portion of the block, the 100 block of North 7th Street. I don't know that we're gonna need all of it, but there's already been four pretty large car clubs notified, and we're wanting to get as much in the area of the courthouse as we can to draw people in, and we felt like that was probably the, a better, safer location. The Lone Star Market would take up quite a bit of parking and be pretty congested over here, so we're asking permission to, to do so. We will be mindful of the restaurant on the corner and some openings, but for the most part, we'd like to block off that, that block.
Anybody have any concerns or discussion on that? No? Chief? No? We're good? All right. Motion to accept the request from Chamber of Commerce to close 100 block of North 7th for the car show during the ethnic festival.
You've got motion.
Uh, second?
I'm sorry?
All in favor, say aye. All right. Just stay standing, huh? Okay. City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on this request from the Chamber of Commerce to use the Pioneer Plaza on South 7th for a beer and wine garden during the ethnic festival.
This also will be blocked off with panels. We have, I discussed adding a beer and wine garden this year to the festival, and that will be, everything will be utilized within the confinement of what is roped off. They cannot take drinks outside of the gated area. And this is just to add, this is just to add something else to the, the festival to bring more people down. There will be a gate open added this year in the close proximity of the courthouse and of course, the car show, and this is just something added. We probably won't open it and run it until after lunch on that day and then through six o'clock or so that evening, but it will be, we will have security. We will have, and it will be dated.
Okay. Yeah, you're gonna have to gate?
Yes.
Are you coordinating to gate these things?
Yes, yes, and we do, we do have insurance in place.
All right. Awesome. Any other questions? No? Everybody good? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the request from the Chamber of Commerce to use the Pioneer Plaza on South 7th Street for a beer and wine garden during the ethnic festival?
I'm gonna go with you.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye. You know, Eli and Dave's gonna get ahead of you to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'm listening. All right, City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on a venue and contract and fees for the lease airport hangers. You should have the new agreement in your packets. I believe it's about six pages.
Just expand it a little. Two pages, three pages, maybe you have?
One.
Yeah? Is that it? No? Come on. It wasn't that bad?
Not bad.
Okay. Maybe so.
I can tell you what changed.
I'll let you.
All right. All right, well, the main purpose of the changes of the request was the changing of the contract or month-to-month agreement, the single paragraph, section two there, section one, and then there's section two, month-to-month term of work. And basically, that means it was continue on until we terminated upon 30 days' notice. And then you notice down here under section three and four, give us the opportunity to increase the ramp from time to time as we see fit. We have just given 30 days' notice of that before it goes into effect. The other agreement was a five-year, 60-month agreement, which didn't balance any, no increases in, as long as it cost a lot of overtime.
Right.
On page two, section four, we discussed the limiting the use of the hangers for airport, aircraft parking and storage. I kinda just made sure that any, was clear that has to be our priority consent for the new, for any other purposes. Um, then on paragraph or section seven, on the bottom of page three, that I kinda tightened up the termination stuff. I add paragraph C, which gives us right of termination upon 30 days' notice.
Okay.
And that's primarily it.
Awesome.
And I made the same changes to the ag laces, which is the second amendment.
Oh, okay. So we did have the two leases, one for the hanger, one for the ax.
Couple of questions. Uh, question three, uh, from A.D. Oh, did we have been there something about us being able to have a right to inspect the hangers at any time? I don't know that people might be taking stuff in there and we're not aware of it or whatever. Should we have the gift that did go in, have these hangers at any time and inspect them without notice?
Yes, we should.
I'm not sure those disposals and all the hazardous material may be used or whatever, should that follow on all the regulations for EPA and?
Hey, Rick.
That's a good add.
Anybody agree with that?
I think it's a good addition.
On the middle, uh, on C, on section four, C, on the middle, when we're talking about maximums of one quart containers of aviation oil or aircraft fuel not to exceed gallons, exactly how, what does that tell me? Can I have, can I have one quart? Can I have four quarts? Eight quarts? So, not exceed gallon, I mean, is that what four quarts is to a gallon? I kind of think, maybe we need to look at certification on that as one quart containers, maybe. It's really ambiguous there is what we say.
Well, anything happen, I'd probably say either quarts or gallon not to exceed. What is, what is the not to exceed?
Yeah.
You know?
It just says gallons of one gallon.
Well, and a lot of your oil now comes of either quart, gallons, or two and a half gallons, you know? So which, which is acceptable? And it's gonna really depend on the size of the plane and the size of the motor, you know, is what their need is.
And that goes back to the space all the oil, so on the oil, used oil, for EPA, that type.
I agree.
That's clarification, how much they can have in there.
Okay.
Then on section five, D, I think it's just a matter of typo there. Leslie agrees not de-fuel. Should that be two fuel or de-fuel any aircraft parking site behind?
Yep.
Two.
That goes.
I'm done.
Chief, next.
That's section five, C, says agrees that he will not store or permit the storage of any fuel, blah, blah, blah. But then you go on back to the four C.
Yeah.
And it says you can't.
Good question. Well, I guess it would be any fuel not used for aviation, I guess, because I don't know why you would allow aircraft fuel and then it would spill the fuel. I know in Brownell, we have people that use these hangers for storing the lawn mower and everything. I just put everything in the can. I don't know if that's what the intent was or not. Should it be verified as aviation, in the case of aviation fuel, or would, of course, if we allow it, one gallon fuel up there, gasoline?
Did you allow that in section C, four, four C, you allowed it, see, don't allow it in five C.
I guess I'm gonna say one gallon of gasoline, not aviation fuel, gas for lawn mowers, et cetera, not to exceed that. Uh, we're talking about having fire extinguishers down there, and that's fine, but is somebody gonna be there to use that fire extinguisher?
Right.
If that fuel happens for whatever reason, it don't have to have that secured container to keep in containers.
Well, that's what that four C, it basically specifies the food containers, and we could say except as a section four, see, Leslie agrees not store, not store, so that kinda makes it more specific. Um, it means you have to only do it in one given ounce in food containers. Maybe that's what it says. He's a fire marshal. He's not here. There's a storage up here, says big discretion of good approval of the local fire marshal. And how, how what? We don't have, I mean, Clyde's got a certification, but it's an older certification. It's not, you know, it's an SFPM certification, it's not State of Texas Fire.
So are you asking as far as maximum?
Well, yeah, you know, if you give some gallons, we have the one.
The normal from the store fuel with airbrush, we don't just buy it.
Right, normally it's.
Well, is it probably only aviation fuel?
But if it's gonna be by, fuel for a lawnmower or something else, it's not gonna be what?
Oh, the new lawnmower though.
Yeah.
Well, I think this is basically you keep them from having like 55 gallon containers.
I mean, for weed hangers, lawn mowers and stuff, they're gonna have to keep the weeds down and whatever, I don't understand.
And just that fuel?
Did they do that? Did they?
Yeah, did they owe that? That's what I mean.
No, did they owe that? They didn't owe that already. Did they owe that?
Okay. Okay, are these hangers, you know, before, they remember, allowed to be used for storage?
Correct.
This is what it said. I didn't change these regulations as notice. Let's do it.
So again, take out the storage and different things like that?
No, no, I just did the change.
The changes that we have talked about and modified?
Well, and I tried to cut something like this one. It says Leslie may store up to maximum of one quart containers of aviation oil or handle of aircraft fuel, not to exceed gallon. So.
Well, when I say store, I'm talking about household furniture.
Oh, no, no, no. That's really.
Lawn mowers.
Only aircraft parking and hanging.
Right. We did clarify that, yes.
It's been the water, but I don't see any, I don't see any storage fuel out there.
Right.
That's not a good.
It's not a good, I don't know anything about plants, why are you gonna ask if you don't have a budget?
Uh, there's a gallon right here that, that had one in it. Uh, it had some in footer. Well, you're talking about one quart of oil, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That's kind of ridiculous, in my opinion, because, I mean, every time you change oil in a plane, you're gonna put out, like, mine holds 12 quarts. It's rather unusual for me to have a case of oil in my hair.
Yeah, it says you store up to maximum of one quart containers of aviation oil, not to exceed gallons, so.
Very confusing terms there.
That's whatever 24 times a quart is.
Yeah, those 12 quarts are 24 quarts in you on a case.
Yeah.
And that's what it takes a, for oil in a plane.
It'd make it more.
So that's kind of ridiculous, you know, one quart.
Change oil in your specific unit, but no need to store that.
Well, take out the indoor aircraft fuel and just say.
Does the, does the, does the oil normally come in a quart now, or is it also coming in gallons?
No, it comes in gallons.
Okay.
There's a lot of time people buy a case of 12 or 24, something like that.
Okay.
Because, you know, they'll change the oil, use 12, then they'll put in eight quart later on or something.
Okay.
So that's.
So up to a case would be acceptable?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
We make that change, take two out. So do we need to postpone for next meeting to finish this?
Yeah. So we're taking out, we're gonna say one quart container or what?
One case of container. Not at C, yeah. But it could be gallon container. But it's all right to just say I store up to a maximum of 24 quarts.
Why don't you say up to 48 quarts, then you're stating two cases of oil?
Forty-eight.
Okay, so if they use a case in order to change oil, then they have the other case in order to maintain, and then we don't do fuel. Are we acceptable to that? Two second?
Your sound's good.
I'm asking. Because if you, you get one quart on sale, get the other one on sale. One case, sorry.
I'm gonna do with fuel.
Yeah. All right, motion to postpone and discuss taking action on the meaning of contract for the airport lease hangers?
No motion.
And second?
Yeah.
Uh, bottom of your second? All right, all in favor? Aye. All right, we will follow up on that next meeting and get that clarified and certified. All right, and so approval of building permits?
We have one. Ben or I? Ben or I? We own four houses, we want to build a 20 by 40 by 80, uh, and put it down in the house, it's expensive also. He owns about two thundies of blocks or a half, 300 rooms. I don't want to take any problem with it.
Okay. Is that gonna be an alley side, street side? Or both?
Ah, there's some rail with locks to what, the southwest side of the house there, I guess.
Backing area? Yes? Close to that facing area?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
No issues, Steve? No. Motion to approve.
Second?
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, here's the police security monthly report from Chief Stanley, please.
All right. Uh, in February, we've had 20 arrests, five accidents, 292 calls for service. Out of those, we have three, three DUIs, two juveniles, um, 80 citations for the month, uh, with around $9,500 in court costs. So, um, of course, we had a missing elder man in February. He still didn't unable to locate. Um, we haven't had any leads, um, and we've done the diligence on that, so. So, any new leads, we've had some this past weekend that came up, that man that was down San Antonio, that ended up not being him, unfortunately. So, it was somebody else that wasn't missing from that area, but.
With ours.
Yeah. Um, of course, um, new camera system that was approved last time will be installed April 12th and 13th, um, here at the fire department. Uh, we should be up there on 5th and 14th.
Two.
Um, what else? Um, well, this happened in March, where we had a significant dirt bust, um, not too long ago, um, where we located and seized a half pound of methamphetamine, um, that was going after. We got the intelligence, passed it on to Winters, and unfortunately, they caught him after he dropped off some of it, um, which, um, we also tried to locate also. We helped Winters TV locate, um, ended up finding it, moved it before we could get to it. So, but the half pound was gonna be delivered to down, so they tried him up for a couple days anyways.
Two.
So, now that's all I, any questions? Any questions?
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for your work. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. All right, here's the city administrator, bio weekly report, please.
Which slide do you want me on? Uh, question, Mr. Dan. Okay. Uh, I thought tonight I'd give you an update on some of the future projects we've got planned. This is the backside of the dam, the new dam at the lake, and as you can see, over the last 35 years, we've had a lot of erosion on that dam. Uh, last summer, we went in there and placed several roundbells that we rolled down the dam to help with that erosion. Uh, our goal is to go back in there, now this is gonna be like a three to four-year project, we'll call it expense. We're gonna go back in there and in between those hay bales, uh, we're gonna fill in with more hay bales, and then at some point, after we get hay bales in there to help hold that soil, we're gonna go in with some more screening, silt screening. I think Corey had a picture of some of it that we had out there, but, uh, we've got, most of this is on the south end of the dam. There's that silt screening. We're gonna have to put about three rows of that up and down that dam to keep that, but once we get the hay bales in there to keep that soil from eroding on down. Most of our topsoil that was on that dam when they built it is now on the other side of the road. Uh, this is a problem that probably should have been taken care of 20 years ago, but it wasn't, and, uh, now we're, but we figure with the hay bales and the silt screening, silt screening, we'll be able to control it a lot better. At some point, we may have to go in there and put some more topsoil in and reseed, uh, but we had good luck this year with what hay bales we put in. We had some sprouting come up out of the hay bales. Our next future project, which we'll probably get started on the last part of this summer, as everyone knows, on 13th Street, when it rains, we have a lot of flooding on 13th. Uh, our bottleneck is where that floodwater or rainwater leads the road and heads towards that rock bridge on Few Avenue. Uh, there's a 10-inch or a 6-inch water main that runs across that ditch, and it's above ground and has concrete poured on it, and it causes all that silt from the rain to stack up behind that concrete, that pipe, and, uh, it slows down the water flow to get to the river. So all we're gonna do is go in there and, and take that 8-inch or 6-inch water main and lower it. Uh, it's sitting right atop a rock, so we're gonna have to jackhammer that rock out and lower that, uh, water main, and then lower that dirt a little in that drainage area. And then as it goes on down that drainage ditch, there's a lot of vegetation, trees, vines, fences that are grown up in there that we're gonna take out and clear. And as it goes on down and gets to 14th Street, it makes a turn to go under 14th Street. Uh, is that the 14th Street cans, Corey, or is that?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, as you can see, those cans that go under 14th Street, they've washed out underneath, and we're gonna have to go in there, and the worst-case scenario, we're gonna have to take that road out and put new cans in. The best-case scenario is that we can go in there and plug all that drainage underneath those cans where that water can get all out through the cans, where it's not going through the cans right now. Then on the other side of 14th Street, it, the drainage ditch enters onto Mike Dankworth's property, and I talked with Mike, and he said we can get in there and do whatever we have to. We can take fences out, we can take trees out, we can take brush out and get a clear path. This all dumps into the Colorado River, right below Dankworth's package, uh, and before the train bridge. So it's gonna be a rather extensive ditch cleaning process, but we're gonna try to get that completed this summer. So hopefully, we can get that water to move on down to the river in this flooding problem that we really have, not only on 13th Street, but also up on 12th Street and East Avenue. We have a lot of water that's stacked up there because it doesn't run on down that drainage ditch. So we're hoping this will take care of some of the problem. But that's our, our two main project goals for this summer is doing a little bit on the dam at the lake and then getting that drainage ditch cleaned up, and hopefully we have alleviated some of the flooding on 13th Street. Other than that, everything's been about normal. We've had, uh, wet water loads down, and while we, during the wintertime, which has helped tremendously. Uh, the new lake is full, uh, we've been catching a little water in the old lake, uh, in the recent rains, plus the, uh, springs have opened up at Valak Creek. Of course, those will quit running once the skids come back down. We're getting a little water anyway. So hopefully, we can wait for a little more rain and fill up the old lake, but going in this summer, we'll get that water back. That's it? Any question? You wanna do that? You wanna mess with that or not?
That'll be with Ken.
Okay. We're good? All right. All right, your request for future agenda items from the city councils, anything we need to be on the agenda, please? All right, your request for future agenda items from the city council, is anything we need to be on the agenda, please? It's another point, everybody just starts talking at the same time. All right, we're going to flip our executive sessions. Ms. Julie Parsons has to get going, so we're gonna go ahead and do the number fifteen first. Uh, sorry about that, Ken, so give you a little bit more on that.
Not a problem.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight, we're getting ready to go into the executive session. So the boundary city council shall meet the executive session as authorized by Texas Government Code, section five five one, dot zero seven four, personnel matters, considering hiring part-time help to assist elementary officer and start process, you know, as hard as it may.